I know.
Despite the staff regulations are so strong, it's hard to get through. Who's willing to talk? Yeah. And I think it needs to be made clear again, we'll feed the pig for six months. Oh, good.
Yes. I can put the whole thing on one sheet of paper this size.
Before we start, could you introduce my, which is for me a film like last night? I usually bring up-
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the May 16th, 2011 Waschugle City Council meeting and ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Forsberg, could you call the rules, please?
Councilmember Costin?
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Delivar?
Present.
Councilmember Greenlee?
Here.
Councilmember Morris?
Here.
And Councilmember Russell informed the city would be absent.
I ask unanimous consent that Councilman Russell be excused.
Second? Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I'd like to pull the minutes for the council meeting of May 2nd.
Okay, we'll take those under consent agenda as we get to those. Any other amendments to the agenda? Okay, any correspondence?
No.
And we're at that point for public comments for any individuals that would like to address the council. Mark, if you could, give us your name and address.
Mark Rohr, 4501 Addy Street, number 54. Little history, I used to come to every council meeting for years and wasn't the, I'd become the planning commissioner and I really enjoyed the time doing that. Some of the reasons why I came to the council meetings were to speak on behalf of C-Trans. I know the, I know the CEO has been here and talked to you. As a citizen of Waschugle, though, I think that we need to have the unanimous support of the city council in this next initiative coming up because it could be devastating to the public transportation system in Park County. And as a prior rider of the C-Van, it's a necessity that needs to be taken care of and the people that ride that need to be taken care of because that's the only way they get around to do their shopping, go to church, go to, you know, to anywhere they want to go. That's the way they have their livelihood. I'd like to see all the council members use their clout, you might say, to promote it around the community to make sure that we support this initiative. Last time, when the initiative came through, East County came in at 75 percent. That's what we need this time. We need to have the support shown from this, from the East County that we approve this amendment and this initiative and that it makes a pass. I will be going to the, to the Camas City Council. You can ask Mr. Morris, I've become really a pain when the last initiative came through. And like I said, I used to come to every meeting, but I just, some health issues and things like that kept me away this time. But I think we're, we're a great community and we need to show our clout in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And just to be sure, that's in regards to the two tenths of a cent increase? Okay. Liz?
Liz Pike, 26, 300 Northeast 3rd Street, Fern Prairie. Thank you all for being here and serving your community. I just wanted to touch, touch on three short topics this evening. First, thank you for your support of, your unanimous support of the 2011 Waschugle Farmers' Market season, which starts on July 2nd. The Shangri-La Farm that I occupy with my friend Neil Kahun, we're going to be proud vendors there this summer. Secondly, I wanted to just say a word about civil behavior in a public setting with elected officials and, and people in the audience and also appointed officials for city government. The reason why we live in America is because it's a free country and we have free speech and we should be okay with disagreeing, but we should not be disagreeable. And my third topic may cause a few hairs to rise on somebody's neck, but I'm going to say it anyway because it's a free country. I'm going to speak a little bit about your upcoming vote tonight on your EMS budget shortfalls with the city of Camas and ECFR. As a former elected official in Camas, we struggled with lots of budget issues with the Camas Fire Department for many years, certainly all the years that I was there. I understand it's gotten worse in the last four years. I would encourage you strongly to use your fiduciary responsibility to discuss all options, including going out to the private sector and seeing what kind of service they could provide our community. I don't agree with Mr. Russell on a lot of things, but I did agree with his recent positions that I read in The Columbian. And I think all of you, as well as the city of Camas and commissioners at ECFR have a responsibility to look at all financial options. There's a new fire chief coming onboard in Camas and it's an opportunity for real positive change and possibly a path of sustainability. So I would encourage all of you to make tough decisions and I would encourage also the fire department to also be open-minded to a more sustainable future. And I think all of the options should be explored, so I'm here to plead with you as a taxpayer in the district to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is the time, but I'm just afraid I'll miss my chance.
No prob-
My name is Robert McGrew. My wife and I have a business at 450 C Street in Waschugle and we just want to go on record as saying we are totally in favor of the, I believe it's what they call the West End becoming highway commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrew. Any other folks from the public wishing to address council? Larry?
Larry Wagner, 62720th Street, Waschugle. I'm not sure quite how this works. You have the 2011 Budget Amendment Number Three under New Business. Is that going to be voted on as a, I'm encompassing, including the EMS 125?
I'm not sure what you're asking, Larry.
Well, what I'm asking is that the EMS Budget 125 be voted on as a separate line item?
It's the only one that's left that I know of from the budget amendments that came forward.
Okay, that's basically what I wanted to know. I, for one, don't believe that this is a proper way to go about resolving the problem. All it does is continue to enable the program to continue on as it has in the past. As you've heard from members of ECFR, which seem to echo the problem that continues to plague the Camas EMS program, their inability and willingness to manage and control their spending. ECFR is only willing to stay on course and pay what the voters have approved to Camas and tend to their obligations to their voters and their budgets. I believe this is a poor idea and if you think that this is going to save money down the road, mergers and consolidations never save money, they cost more money. Who's going to be held accountable to the taxpayers and the fire service if you vote for option four and it does not work out? There is absolutely no guarantees that option four will produce anything of value for the voters other than the need for more money until it's all gone. Do you really believe that we'll be able to float another EMS ballot bond down the road? I say this just to look at the prior record of this program and ask, do we want to invest more additional money into it? Would you be willing to invest your own personal money? Many of you councillors have already stated the program is unsustainable in the short term or the long term. Then why do you vote to give the voters hard-earned money away on such a wing and a hard prayer? The Camas will, and the economy will change. This is truly being good stores of the voters freely given money. It is truly beneficial to the members of the community. I believe that no matter what we do, we are going to see a reduction in service over the next few years. And speaking of the level of service, we have enjoyed the Camas Medic Union being stationed here in Waschugle for the past few years. As you know, and have expressed at prior meetings, the concern about the amount of monies that are projected to come in over the next few years for our own city budgets. If we do not take care of ourselves first, we will never be able to continue to provide the services to our community over the long haul. There is nothing wrong with being benevolent to our neighbors, but not at the cost of putting ourselves into jeopardy. This is not about friendship, but about good business. We should never agree to something before we have a workable plan set for, I surely don't understand the need to approve before we get the employees to devise and agree on a plan. If we come to an impasse and it dies out in limbo, no one ever agrees to part with their money before they see the contract. Business is just not done this way. Why is the staff and chiefs are good with this when the people doing the work have grave apprehensions about this and seem to be ignored? With all the administration changes taking place in Camas, the new fire chief and mayor coming onboard, I believe that we should be patient and wait till the dust settles in Camas before making any sort of commitment to this program. I urge you to vote no on EMS Budget 125 line item, 125.
Thank you, Larry. Any other members of the public wishing to address council? Yes?
Other comments?
Mm-hmm.
Guys, we hear, step up.
If you step up to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Name and address?
Yes, please.
Steve Levingood, 4451 Addy Loop, Waschugle 98671. Just briefly, just going to read an email that I sent last month. As a citizen of Waschugle and one who lives on Billham Lake Park, I would like to place a complaint in regards to the city's community garden placed in the heart of the park a couple of years ago. As a parent of four kids from four to 10 years of age who love the use of the park as a park, we also have many kids and families that use the park as a park, who live in apartments, homes, and trailer parks adjacent to the park. I've noticed that the city's community garden takes up much of the space formerly used by children and families for various recreational activities. I know Little League in town used to use the, the very space for T-ball games and so forth. I would like to request the removal of the city's community garden and the restoration and preservation of Billham Lake Park as just that, a park for use by the majority of the community. Including, I do have a few pictures that I can pass around, they're not very clear, but I can email them if anybody wants, of the community garden taken last month. You will see that the city's community garden looks unkept. The fencing looks like, in my opinion, a prison camp. The sidewalk is still tore up from where they installed water and so forth. Kids riding bikes are always, you know, having problems with that. And now a new sign has been installed between the two no parking signs. That's a 20-minute loading zone right between two no parking signs right on a corner. Thank you for bearing with me here. So I request that the park be completely removed and grass be planted in its place for all to enjoy, or something else that would be more of use to the kids and so forth in the best interest of the majority of the community. Also, just in final thoughts, it came to my attention the other day that there's also a law that basically kids cannot play near streets and so forth, which obviously, hello, smart thing. But why would we then go tearing up parks, taking up space that kids from these apartments and so forth were using for football and so forth? Now they're forced basically to go closer to streets, et cetera. So that's in a nutshell all I wanted to say. I do have some pictures, or I can email them if anybody wants and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. If you could email your pictures this evening or tomorrow morning to Mrs. Forsberg so she can disseminate those out, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Trevor, can you make sure that we, or Trevor, I'm sorry. Jim, could you make sure that we follow up with Suzanne on that? I think I even noticed when the information came out on community gardens this year, I don't know that Hamlet Park was even mentioned in there. So if we don't have a use for that, or if that was just an oversight, we need to correct it either way. Thank you. Steve, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to address council? Okay, moving into consent agenda. Paul, you wanted to pull item number one?
Yes.
Okay. Any other changes to consent agenda? I do have one note for each of you and for the record, items five, six, seven, eight, and nine, the public hearings in regards to our rezones. If you could make a note on those, we managed to leave the time for the public hearings off. These will all be set for June 6th at 6:00 PM. So minus item number one and that change on those five items, what would council's pleasure be with consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number one.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And council minutes of May 2.
On the second page, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven paragraphs down, just above it, motion to table this item, motion passed. I don't understand that next paragraph, how it fits into the sequence of things and what the comments were about.
The council comments that, starting with Councilmember Morris discussed option one?
Yes.
The way, the way the minutes have been laid out, the motions go in order and then the discussion kind of comes after, even though it applies to motions above. So that actually goes with the EMS discussion, the first motion?
Oh, okay.
Do you have to make a motion to be able to discuss?
Right.
So instead of putting-
I just didn't understand because the motion to table passed and then there was discussion afterwards and that didn't make sense to me.
I can move them under the motion where no action was taken.
Or move the motion past six to one underneath the last comment by council?
I hate to be picky about those things, but it did confuse me.
Either way, I think it clarifies it.
With that change, then, I move that we approve item one.
Second?
We've got a motion and a second to approve the Waschugle City Council Minutes of May 2, 2011 with the noted changes. Any council discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Takes us to New Business Agenda Bill 6411, 2011 Budget Amendment Number Three. Mrs. Forsberg.
Council and mayor, this budget amendment will approve the additional expenditures of $150,000 out of the EMS Fund 125 to give additional support to the EMS system. Approving this budget supplement does not mean funds will be immediately spent. Several items would need to be clarified, agreed upon, approved, and signed before any payments would be authorized. For instance, we'd need an updated approved and sign in our local agreement with Camas, approved and signed MOUs with the unions, and clarification of the appropriate use of the volunteer program to ensure the use and duties of the Waschugle volunteers is not diminished, excuse me, diminished in any fashion and may actually be expanded where necessary. And this would also need to be agreed upon by both cities, the union and the volunteer Upon approval, pending approval of this additional appropriations, the staff will be moving forward with the option four and getting agreements drafted. And I'm going to turn it over to City Administrator Scott for further information.
Thank you, Mayor and council. At your last workshop, there was some questions from the council about the status of Paul Lewis's analysis of the functional consolidation that's been taking a parallel track. And I reported at that time that, later that week, so late last week, that we were meeting to look at the final draft of that. And I want to be sensitive to the process that we're following, which is a little bit later this week, the Planning Committee that consists of two members of council from both Waschugle and Camas, as well as our chiefs and administrators, the mayors, representatives from the volunteers and from the unions, who have been meeting over a series of meetings. We'll be meeting with Paul to hear the results of that. But we thought it would be helpful just to make a couple of comments preliminarily about that so that you had that information tonight because that was kind of the nature of some of the questions that you had. But again, I want to be sensitive to the fact that we're meeting with the Planning Committee later this week and we will certainly have a full work session jointly, most likely, with Camas to see the full results of that. But just some real high-level sort of conclusion-type things from Paul on this. Based on his analysis, there's a finding that a functional consolidation can enhance services at the same or lower cost in terms of personnel. That's based on a number of assumptions that we won't go into tonight, but the, in terms of a red light or a green light or a yellow light around the overall cost driver, the light would be green in terms of continuing to explore that analysis and that indeed we can enhance services for basically the same cost. Another conclusion is that the projected regional EMS deficit, which is what we are seeking to address with the proposed budget amendment before you this evening, increases in 2012 due to a projected assessed value decline. Now, we've known that, in fact, that's true for all of our general funds and programs that are supported out of the property taxes. The declining assessed value just has an impact on that. What's important to note is that the functional consolidation doesn't really have an impact on that. That happens no matter what. So one of the questions that we posed in this analysis was, the first one, which I answered yes to, the second one is, is it sustainable? And the answer to that is the same it is, as it is right now. No, it's not sustainable. We need to further attack the problem. However, a functional consolidation doesn't exacerbate the problem. It just gives us an opportunity to seek efficiencies, particularly in the area of overtime reduction because of leveraging economies of scale around personnel. So that's the very high-level preliminary conclusions of that. As I mentioned, we will explore that in some detail with the Planning Committee later this week. It's a separate but parallel track and I know that it was, you thought it was important to have at least some preliminary information on that. So with that, I believe we've provided information over the last several weeks on this particular issue and turn it back to the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the ordinance be read by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1698, adopting the annual budget of the city of Waschugle for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2011. Mr. Mayor, I ask, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Council discussion?
I want to make a statement here, but I, at this point, and I will listen closely to the discussion from other council members, but at this point, I would support this amendment and option four only because I believe that it buys us the time necessary to sort this In workshop, I said, and I want to be absolutely clear, that I am willing to feed this pig for the next six months, but without substantial savings, in six months, the pig gets slaughtered. So with that caveat and knowing that staff, both the administrator and the chief of our city and of Camas have supported this and make strong arguments in its favor, I'm willing to press forward. But I want to be absolutely clear that I view this as a temporary measure, that the cost structure of the EMS system is not sustainable and it must be fixed. How that's fixed, I don't know at this point, but I want to buy six months to find out. That's it.
Thank you, Paul. Other council? Molly?
Yes, in the past couple of weeks, I've pulled a lot of documents about this particular issue, the $150,000 for EMS. I know there's earlier ones, but we, I do have one in front of me that started from November of last year. And when I counted the number of times we have been discussing the issue either in workshop, council, or joint workshops with Camas, it's well over five times. You know, I think on this rare occasion, I think I can probably speak for the council that we've deliberated and had great angst about this particular topic. Number, on one side, we know that we have a service that we must provide for our citizens. It's essential that we do that. And on the other side, we see that now and then down the road, it's not a sustainable picture. So we have struggled with this issue. But in this particular case, I do feel like I will rise to support this budget amendment because we, it does buy us time, as Mr. Greenlee said. And we all know that we have, all of us collectively have a lot of work to do to find out how to provide ambulance services for our residents and make it affordable.
Thank you, Molly. Other council?
I'm at the same point that Molly and Paul are at. We just need to move forward on this thing. One of the things that, between David and Don English, should we have had the memorandum of understanding in place prior to, or do we need to put these budget dollars in place first in order to have some form of a plan? Because that's, you know, we can look at option four, but it's much more detailed than what's written as description in option four to make this thing work. So is that the reason that we've, we've kind of drug our feet on getting the memorandum of understandings done and that type of thing?
Actually, I think it's more a case that, from my standpoint, it's more a case you're right. It is, it is more involved, it is more complicated. And before we put staff and attorneys' time to trying to sort through all of that, we were looking for a clear direction of the council on if it was something they even wanted to entertain and move forward with. If so, I think we can bring those documents forward fairly quickly. If not, I certainly didn't want to waste anybody's time on, on going through those administrations.
Yeah, because again, we're going to do this and then in six months, I really believe we're going to be sitting here looking at how do we, how do we fix this problem, this not sustainable problem that we have right now. So, but I will in fact support option four tonight because I want this thing to move forward and see where it all plays out, but it's just not sustainable and there's got to be some things done differently than we've been doing.
Mr. Mayor, I rise in opposition to this motion. I completely understand that our EMS system is leaking money, especially due to the government's failure to reimburse actual costs for Medicare service, just one of the portions of that. However, the proposal before us today only kicks the can down the road and as everyone noted, it does not fix the problem, it just patches it for the time being. And I urge the parties involved to come before the council with a proposal that balances the revenue with the services provided. Just because we have a momentary surplus in our Fund 125 doesn't mean that we have to spend it now and it doesn't mean that we have to spend it in an unsustainable fashion. I yield the floor. Dave?
I find myself back in the business of selling pain and suffering. It's not an unfamiliar role to me. I was an information systems manager in the mid-1980s to early 90s and- I was an information systems manager in the mid-1980s to early 90s, and we were selling the requirement to make major investments in equipment, which costs a lot of money, training, which costs a lot of money, dedicating people, which costs a lot of money. And we were telling people they were going to have to do this if they wanted to embrace automation, which they wanted to do. So, I find myself back in that role of selling pain and suffering here. Administration is seeking to avoid the pain and suffering, and that's understandable. Unfortunately, pain and suffering does not age well, has a very short shelf life. What that means is that inevitably, especially if it's based on a structural deficit in the budget, which ours is, it means that the problem will get worse with the passage of time. In our case, as I'll illustrate in a minute, it gets significantly worse. So, the experience I have in dealing with these types of issues over a period of 40 years tells me that it's better to tackle the issue earlier rather than later, so that you don't suffer that increase in the size of the problem. In addition to that, as Councilman Delivar pointed out, there's no guarantee that $150,000 is going to solve this problem. In fact, we've been told that it will not solve the problem. It will get us through the next seven months. And there are advantages to doing that, one of which is trial consolidation. I don't see that that is precluded by not approving this additional money. The fact that the additional money doesn't guarantee a solution to the problem is only one aspect of my disagreement with it. The other aspect of it is that it will get worse. In fact, right now, we're talking about $150,000. The projection for the deficit beginning in January of 2013, excuse me, is $289,000. Now, some of that may be whittled away by a temporary consolidation, which enables us to make some efficiencies in the use of personnel, eliminate overtime, and things like that. There is, however, no guarantee that that'll happen. So, it boils down to this. There's no guarantee this is going to solve the problem. In fact, we know, we've been told that it won't. We do know that it'll make it worse. We don't know exactly how much worse, but it'll be substantial. And based on that, short of hearing anything else that would change my mind, I'm going to vote against this thing tonight, even though initially, I was enthusiastically in favor of it. We've all done a lot of work here. We've listened carefully to what each other, each of us has had to say. We've talked to staff, we've talked to experts, we've talked to people who used to be in the business, as well as those who are currently in the business. And now we've come down to this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Dave. Any other council comments?
I do, I have a quick comment. Basically, I echo the majority here on the council. I see this as a Band-Aid, basically, to see us through the end of the year. I'll be voting in favor of it, so we can buy some more time. I do expect to have more concrete solutions brought forward. This isn't sustainable. I completely agree with the majority of council here tonight. I'm definitely open to listening to all the alternative solutions, whether privatizing, consolidations, whatever's brought forward, I think we need to consider every option.
Thank you. Paul?
Councilman Morris got me to thinking something that I'd left out. Also, I want to be clear that, for myself, voting in favor of the budget amendment does not give any information about whether or not I will support the interlocal or the MOU, that it depends very much on the content of those. And that I, you know, I agree with, to some degree, with council members Shoemaker and Delivar, that we need to be very careful here, that we're not throwing good money after bad. This city has a history over many years that we do not spend one-time revenue on ongoing expenses. We reserve one-time revenue for one-time expenses. This is a violation of that principle. And I admit, I have to hold my nose here a little bit to do this, but I do agree with Councilman McDaniel, that we do need to buy time, we do need to move forward, and with a new fire chief coming to CAMUS and other changes in the city government over there, there's great hope for a new relationship and a new future.
Just one more thing, and that is that after tonight, if this vote is successful, kind of sounds like the six of us that are sitting here are going to hold some people's feet to the fire, that some of this stuff starts getting done very quickly. Obviously, Mr. Mayor, we'll start with you, and it trickles downhill from there, but the work has to get started, and it's started soon.
Other comments?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just one typographical comment. It says ordinance 16XX. Do we need to have an ordinance number for this by any chance, just to make sure?
It will actually be ordinance 1699.
I request unanimous consent to change 16XX to 1699.
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear.
Oh, just, I request unanimous consent to change the ordinance number from 16XX to 1699.
There are no objections. So ordered.
Thank you.
Just for background of council, I think on those in resolutions, we always leave those blank anyway, because coming up in the agenda, I don't think staff wants to walk out on a limb and assume what order you may take things in. So, that's why on the top of your agendas, we always have.
Thank you.
The next, the next number's in order. I certainly appreciate the comments from council this evening on this item. We certainly have, if the council has talked about it five times throughout the last few months, I think at a staff level, we've talked about it probably
Dozens.
Ten times that number. But I'm a firm believer in continued discussion, in questions, in getting the answers that you need, and as many of you will recall, I've always said that, you know, you're certainly charged with doing the business of the public, and you need to have all of the information, accurate information and good information in order to do that. So, while it sometimes seems painful to some folks that it takes as long to get through an issue such as this, it certainly isn't on my side. You certainly have my pledge and assurance that regardless which way this vote may go this evening, that at a staff level, and certainly as appropriate at the legislative level, we will be working this issue in the next few months. I don't believe that there are any guarantees whatsoever that we're going to have any magical answers by the end of the year, but certainly, we're going to be striving to know as much as we can and try and get that nailed down as much as we can before the budget cycles for all of us come back through. So, again, from my perspective, I appreciate the time that you have put into this and continue to allow us to put it onto the agenda for additional discussion and a final resolution. So, with that, any final council comments?
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No. Roll call.
Councilmember Coeston?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
No.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Delivar?
No.
Councilmember Greenley?
Aye.
And Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Motion carried. With that, we're at the second opportunity for any public comments this evening for the council. Mark?
Mark Rohr, 4501 Addy Street, number 52. Before I got a simple question, how long before the E Street diet's done?
Jim left, didn't he?
Actually, I can answer that. We've been told in Public Works Committee that the target date is the 21st of August.
Are they going to repave that whole street and everything?
From, well, there'll be a level of repaving for the whole street, but what you and I would agree is repaving, as from Waschugle River Road to 32nd Street. And the plan is that, at the moment, we're in the worst part of it, which is where they dig up the street to put in the water laterals and the other utility laterals. Once that's done, they can put temporary surfacing over the crushed rock on the south side, and then once the work, the sidewalks and curbs are done, on the north side, they will repave the north side, and then shift the traffic to the north side and work on the south side.
Thank you. I was just curious. I avoid the street as much as possible.
Don't, it's not that bad.
No, I, I have to
There's a car out there somewhere.
I have to admit, I pointedly drive down it just to, because I think it's, I should, but the one caveat that I do want to say is that any construction is weather-dependent. And if we got major weather problems, principally heavy rain through the summer, that would slow things down.
Other members of the public wishing to address council? Barbara?
Barbara Currie, 303 Lux Street, apartment 4. I think we should have a celebration and reflection plaza when the E Street project is finished.
Reflection Plaza's a few blocks away from E Street.
Well, that's all right. You can't celebrate in the middle of the street.
Sure, we can. There's enough barricades and cones and candles down there. We can block off Highway 14.
I amend my comment. We should have a celebration on the street before we open it up after it's all done.
There you go. There you go. Thank you, Barbara. Any other comments from public?
Hi, Mike Breger, 2868 West 9th in Waschugle. A couple sessions ago, we had a meeting where there were some excused absences, which I understand, well, we're going to have that. And we have one tonight. And my question is, and I think I know the answer to this, but I want it to be confirmed, is that will there be any problem with your votes tonight? If this one person that's not here, he missed out on the vote, so is there going to be any problem with the votes being real? Because the last time we had, you know, two missing by excused absences, but discussions came up, and it got pretty heated, and, you know, two people left. So, I don't want to see that happen again tonight. So, maybe for me and the rest of people, if you could state how absences happen and why votes. And I understand it's not against the rules or law or anything to walk out on a vote, but I don't want that to happen tonight. So, without being too cute, I just would like to know what the rules are on excused absences, and does he then realize that he misses out, and that's just the way it goes, no matter what the vote is? And I'll sit down. Thank you.
Yes, potentially. You know, there is always the possibility that we're going to have council members absent. That's why, for cities of varying sizes, state law prescribes how many council members you have, and takes into account the fact that folks can be gone, and the life of government and the work of the city still needs to continue on. So, I certainly can't speak on behalf of Councilman Russell, other than his comments at workshop last week, that he was in favor of option four, but noted at that council, or at that workshop, that he wouldn't be here this evening as well. In regards to votes, I believe every vote that this chair entertains is a real vote. So, where those may go later on reconsideration, any of those type of things, that is certainly open to the council at any other time as it is on any item, even if all the members are present.
Other?
Excused absence is a term of art. Would the city attorney explain the difference between a
For council members, if the, if the absence is not excused, three in a row would terminate your council, would terminate that person from council?
Vacates a seat.
Vacates a seat.
Other comments from public?
Okay, under Mayor's report, I have a couple, three items. This last Saturday, I attended, as did Councilmember Morris, the retirement of Tom Davis from the Waschugle Police Department. Tremendous opportunity to hear some stories. I think it was a wonderful turnout. I know they started with more than 90 folks who were scheduled to be there at the Waschugle High School Commons, and for those of you that know Tom and know the history, the last few years of his service, he has been the school resource officer for the high school, and actually graduated from Waschugle High School. So, my commendations to the police department and all the officers involved in putting on that retirement party, it was, it was very well done. I am happy to report that we did final interviews this afternoon, actually, all day, for some of the staff, and then this afternoon for the city engineer's position. While we don't yet have a decision yet on who to offer the position to, I am happy to report that we have two extremely qualified finalists, and as somebody said in the process today, if these are the two we ended up with, the process was extremely good, and we have choices, and we can't make a bad decision. So, hopefully, we'll have some information out in the next, in the next week or so on that decision. Final item is, for your calendars, is to add, in addition, on May 23rd, in addition to our regularly scheduled workshop at 6:00 PM, we are scheduling a special joint workshop at 4:00 PM that afternoon with our council, CAMUS's council, and the Port Commissioners. That meeting will be held at the Court Building down on C Street, the old PUD building, and the sole topic for that, that joint session is the Economic Development Group and the interlocal agreement to deal with that, the formation of that organization. That's all that I have this evening. Council comments? Rod?
Yeah, I need a clarification, Councilman Greenley. You said that construction is conditional on heavier rain. Heavier than what lately? We've had a ton of rain, so I just want to make sure we get some clarification on that. If everybody, anybody has looked around the room tonight, there's several of us with completely shaved heads, not just partially bald, like I've been in the past, and I wanted everybody to know that 20 of the fire, of our firefighters in Waschugle had their heads shaved either Wednesday night of last week or Saturday at, down at Oaks Park, and it was for St. Baldric, which is an organization who collects money and for kids with cancer. Fire chief kind of led the way for, on that, and all the rest of us took and had our hair shaved, and I asked, since it was a $50 donation for those of us that were contributing to it, if I could get away with 25, but no one thought that was worthy of it. But, anyway, I was very proud of our organization down there. There was 20 of us out of a little over 30 that participated in it. So, it's great that we were able to support our community like that. Saturday, last Saturday was Hike on the Dyke. West Columbia-Gordon-Schumane Society put on the Hike on the Dyke, and they had a lot of vendors. We, chief allowed me to take the, one of our fire trucks down, and was a real hit with the kids and their dogs for a $5 donation, and everybody seemed to buy right into that. They got their picture taken and printed right there at the time, and so that worked out very well down there. They actually ended up with a larger participation this year than they'd had last year, and actually, three or four more vendors. So, very pleased with that. That went well. Marilyn, did you notice there's a curb in the middle of E Street and G Street right there, that they can't turn down your street now? You have to thank us for that one of these days after you see that.
I thank you for that, Paul. I do have a, there's a point about that, though, we'll talk about later with
But I think that's probably, that's the one topic we've talked more than we have, the EMS, is the curb and your traffic on G Street. So, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, this gentleman who had told us he avoided E Street made me wonder, what's his alternative? It's probably G Street.
And the other thing that I wanted to talk about, and the mayor already talked a little bit about it, was the Tom Davis retirement. And it was interesting that Rick Foster, who was our animal control, one of our animal control officers, his wife put together a video of
control officers, his wife put together a video for Tom Davis, and a lot of things went on there. But to show you the respect and the admiration that the school district had for him, they put their own video together. And there were people at that school that were choked up over the fact that Tom was no longer their school resource officer. It was, it was amazing to see how much admiration the school district had for him and the time that he spent up there. There were just nothing but good things, they said. The connection that he had with the kids, the connections with the kids and the teachers, brought back results to the police department for things that were happening in town. It was really interesting to listen to, and I think those are always fun times when you go to somebody's retirement. You learn more about that individual. But in this case, Tom was an exception to the rule, where you graduate from a school and end up being the school resource officer back at that school, and a very well-respected one at that. So it was a fun evening.
Thank you. Other council? Paul?
The only announcement I have is there's an Aging Readiness Workshop on civic and social engagement at the Red Cross Building in the Historic Reserve. That's 605 Barnes Road at 4:00 PM on Thursday.
Two to four.
I'm sorry?
Not four.
Two to four?
Two to four.
And it's already full.
And it's already full. Thank you.
Other council items? We're going to go right down the line. Michael?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a couple of things to hand out, actually, you as well. Mr. Mayor, I rise tonight in regards to the Camas-Washugle Economic Development Association, which I'll refer to as the association. When the discussions first came up, it had the appearance to me of being orchestrated by the administrations of the Camas, I'm sorry, Waschugle-Camas and the Port of Camas-Washugle as a joint effort. As I reflect back on those talks, it appeared that none of the principal architects of the newly formed association stood to gain financially from this arrangement. Now, I question whether it is ethical for the mayor of Camas to be chosen as the first director of the association. I say this mainly because of RCW 42-23.030, which states, "Interest and contracts prohibited, exceptions. No municipal officer may be beneficially interested directly or indirectly in any contract which may be made by, through, or under the supervision of such officer, or in whole or in part, or which may be made for the benefit of his or her office." It goes on to continue with some exceptions which I do not believe apply here. I'm certain that I don't have all the facts and all the answers in this case, but I do know that the mayor of Camas was at the table when all three jurisdictions talked about the new Economic Development Association. The intent of the relevant RCWs makes it plainly clear to me that it is not legal to use our elected position for personal financial gain. That is the clear intent of the law. The position for economic development director has been awarded to Mr. Dennis, which is understandable, as Mr. Dennis has 20 years of economic development with other jurisdictions. The first meeting in which I remember us discussing any details about the proposed association was in the Camas Library with the City Council of Camas, the City Council of Waschugle, and the Port of Camas-Washugle officials in attendance. When sitting at the table in the Camas Library, the assumption any interested observer would make about Mr. Dennis's 20 years' worth of experience is that he would be in favor of developing this association because of his experience with his results. I'm sure that Mr. Dennis is capable of doing the job. After all, he's been doing it for 20 years. But especially if he's best qualified for the position, it might appear to be unethical for him to have been at the table when we created the demand for his newly offered job. I've spoken with Mr. Dennis about this, and he claims that he was not interested in even applying for this position until the request for applicants went out. I respectfully submit that whether Mr. Dennis was interested from the beginning or not is irrelevant. Good ethical behavior should suggest that public officials not be involved in creating the demand for contracts that they can benefit from, regardless of whether that was their intention or not. The RCWs do not speak to intentions, but rather actions. If an interlocal agreement regarding Camas-Washugle Economic Development Association is brought before this council, I will be voting no. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Chair?
Yes. Actually, my comments are about the Stride coming up this weekend. I wanted to encourage everyone to support the Waschugle Schools Foundation. The runs begin at about 8:00 AM, but will continue throughout the afternoon, and I'm actually heading up the runner drop-off area this year, so I will be there all day. But please do come if you can. It's at the Waschugle High School track and field area, so.
And which day is that, gentlemen?
That's this coming Saturday, starting about 8:00 AM. But if you can't make it that early, please just come when you can. Thanks.
Thank you. Dave?
On Monday, Memorial Day, the 30th of May, every year, the American Legion and the VFW combine to put on a ceremony recognizing those who didn't return from foreign battles, foreign battlefields. And this year, I've been asked to be what they call the warm-up speaker again. The warm-up speaker only has two requirements. First, he has to be from Waschugle, and secondly, he has to be short. Six minutes max.
Oh. Oh, that guy.
That guy's short, yes. Sorry about that. I don't qualify on the other one. I would encourage people to come this year because we're recognizing two young Waschugle men who gave their lives in the Vietnam War. One is Gary Lynn Campan, who was our only killed-in-action combat casualty during the Vietnam War from Waschugle. The other is Richard Daniels, who's just recently been added to the Vietnam Wall. He was a non-combat casualty. The family knows he was killed by a gunshot, has no idea what happened, and the services haven't, the Navy hasn't told him. So we're going to recognize these young men and their contribution to making Waschugle a safe place to live, and we encourage you to come. Thanks very much.
Thank you for representing the city of that, Dave. I know we're scheduled on vacation that weekend, but are returning early to be there for the services, so.
It's an honor. Molly?
Thank you. I would just like to concur with Councilman Shoemaker regarding the Memorial Day ceremony. You know, that's the, really, the, for the cemetery board, of which I'm the liaison, that is the big event of the year, and they take it very seriously and do a lot of work to make sure that that's successful. And in addition, I have attended the Stride a number of years, and it is a hoot, whether you have kids or no kids, it's very inspiring to go. And even if you spend an hour to watch some of those little kids, you know, scoot around the track, it's really terrific. And I'm sorry I missed a lot of events this last weekend, but I was in Southern California. I have a niece that graduated from dental school at University of Southern California, USC Dental School, so it's a pretty major accomplishment. And now she'll just have to work for another 25 years to pay off her student loans. But that's the way it goes, so I'm very proud of her.
USC medical and dental may take her 30 years.
Yeah.
I don't think I want to know what a Trojan dentist looks like. Just a quick follow-up. Memorial Day, 11 o'clock in the morning?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think so, too. I know we've got some flyers out back. And for anybody that might be interested, this Friday afternoon, I know the weather is supposed to be gorgeous, and at 3:30 in the afternoon, the Rotary Club is doing a work project up at the cemetery to plant flowers and kind of spruce things up in anticipation of the 30th. You don't need to be part of Rotary, you don't need to become part of Rotary, but I'm sure that they would welcome any help that, that day as well. So with that, any other items from council? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
I've got a motion in two or three seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Under one hour.
This is a record for this year.
Totally.